Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi Sylvia.
Hi Sylvia.
Okay. Promote, you're going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. We have no students this evening. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, December the 2nd, 2019. This evening, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Village Clerk, Promote Shaw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts.
Here.
Trustee Sutker.
Here.
Trustee Ulrich.
Here.
Trustee Bromberg.
Here.
Trustee Klein.
I'm here.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Here.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Here. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion is in order, Trustee Roberts seconded, Trustee Ulrich. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye. The motion passes. This evening, we would like to honor a distinguished member of our community for a unique distinction that he has achieved, and I use the word distinction because that is exactly what it is. And we have this evening a short introductory video that will tell you a little bit about Habib Kadri and his importance to the community.
...in trust, Chicago's Bank. He is a school principal whose hard work and dedication has impressed students and staff alike. And recently, his work had caught, has caught attention of national education leaders. Habib Kadri is one of Chicago's very own.
All right, guys, let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go. We've got to get going.
Habib Kadri has watched his students flourish at the Muslim Community Center Academy Schools for over a decade.
Our motto is called building character and developing minds. And so, it's very important for us, and not the academic success, which our kids have done well, but also the character aspect.
Located in Morton Grove and Skokie, Muslim Community Center Academy is one of 240 Islamic parochial schools nationwide. It's seen great success since Principal Kadri took the helm in 2002. Under his leadership, Kadri has transformed just about every aspect of this school. He's balanced the budget, increased test scores, and student population. Last month, he was the first Islamic school principal to receive the prestigious National Distinguished Principals Award. But there's more to the school's success than numbers. It is the culture he's created.
So, he's constantly telling us about the up-and-coming, cutting-edge research that he's learning about at Harvard, where at the same time, he has these really, you know, fun songs for the kids at assembly. And again, I think that's what makes him very unique.
If you could show kids that, hey, as even the leader of the school, education is important, but also being happy, being fun, and you want education to be fun, and you could also, at certain times, even be a little silly.
Buzz myself back to my room.
Kadri says in addition to fun, he wants his students to connect with the world outside of school walls. All students are required to participate in 10 hours of community service prior to graduation.
We've done 1,000 sandwiches to the homeless that we've given. We did a shoe drive, and we find out that, you know, how many people don't have shoes in the world. The United States, state, your local area. So, just to give them a better understanding of, hey, it's not about you.
Kadri has been called a trailblazer for his innovative approach, and students say he's a friend and a mentor.
He also gives a motivational speech, like talks to us, like to always let us know that, like, never give up or anything. So, it's like, it's nice having him, like, giving these, like, little talks to, like, encourage us more.
His energy and care for his staff and students is palpable, and Kadri says they're like family. When diagnosed with cancer last year, he decided to turn it into a real-life teaching moment, sharing the news with his students.
I'm going to fight this, and I want you to realize it's okay, and it's okay to show emotion, you know? It's okay to express what you're thinking.
But throughout his personal challenges, this inspirational principal continues to remain positive.
He's contagious, you know? His optimism is contagious.
Habib Kadri, he's one of Chicago's very own. And Principal Kadri doesn't stop in the school buildings. He has started dozens of after-school programs. He's also working to expand the school to include high schoolers.
We're very proud of Habib, and it's wonderful to see him back at work. The video, the news report mentioned Habib's bout with cancer, and as you can see, he's back. I don't know if he's playing basketball quite yet, but I think he's a power forward. But it is wonderful to see him back, and we wanted to thank Arjumon Khan of H3M Media Consulting for helping us get acquisition of the WGN report. And I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas, Skokie Principal Habib Kadri received the National Distinguished Principal Award, he is the first Islamic school principal honored from the National Association of Elementary School Principals. And whereas, the Village of Skokie would like to congratulate Habib Kadri for being selected to represent private schools. Principal Kadri is the principal of the Muslim Community Center Academy at 9301 Gross Point Road in Skokie, and I will add Morton Grove as well. Whereas, Principal Kadri's dedication and commitment of serving as principal of the MCC Academy has led him to this high recognition. He is one of only four private school leaders selected in the entire nation. And whereas, Principal Kadri has led the MCC to become one of the first Islamic parochial schools to receive a national accreditation by implementing a comprehensive improvement plan, which has dramatically improved standardized test scores at the school. And if you're ever interested, you would be astounded by how much these test scores have improved over just the last tenure of Principal Kadri. Whereas, Principal Kadri's work as a public speaker, author, and mentor for numerous local and national organizations. And whereas, Principal Kadri holds a Master's in Educational Leadership from Wayne State University, and I believe Wayne State is in Detroit. My father graduated from Wayne State University Law School, and I almost went to law school there. A bachelor in Teaching of History from the University of Illinois Chicago, and has been appointed to a four-year term at the Harvard Graduate School of Education Principal Advisory Board. And whereas, Principal Kadri is an engaged community leader who is respected and admired by many, especially his students, as you could see from the TV report. Now therefore, I, George Van Dusen, Mayor of the Village of Skokie, along with all of the village's elected officials, do hereby proclaim December 2nd, 2019, as Habib Kadri Day in Skokie, and hereby commend and congratulate Habib for his inspiration, his drive, and his determination for educating the youth of our great village. And Habib, I'd like to present this to you, if I may.
On behalf of my family, the Muslim community, the MCCA school community, I want to thank Mayor Van Dusen and the Board and the trustees, and the whole team of Skokie for the top-notch facilities and services and schools. I want to applaud your village and your leadership for opening doors and celebrating the vast diversity of Skokie that Skokie offers. Skokie is also nationally renowned, where the nationally renowned Police Department, where you notice the great chief skills of dance skills that he has. To the great library, where Mr. Kong has played a great part, where my kids, even though we still own a place in Skokie, we moved to Morton Grove, but my kids still make me drive to Skokie Library. Because even today, I messed up and parked at the Skokie Library. I'm like, I'm not supposed to be here. I'm supposed to go to Village. And also, the high schools, which my own daughter, who just started her freshman year. But what makes it great is not that many of us are not just colleagues, but we are friends. And this is what's been great, where many of us in our own community and its leadership feel that we could come to you, where we could work together to make the Skokie better. And I really want to applaud your leadership, and through learning from you, it's only making us better to become better leaders. So, thank you so much, and this is completely an honor and a surprise. And tomorrow, I'm going to tell the kids on that day, I get no tickets from the Skokie Police Department. On that day, I'm going to keep this on my dashboard, like, look! No, I'm kidding. All right, you have a blessed day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And it is an honor to call Habib our friend and our colleague. Also, this evening, we would like to urge and single out the great work of the Niles Township Food Pantry. And I would like to read a proclamation, because I think it summarizes the great work that the township does. Whereas, the Niles Township Food Pantry initially started out in the basement of the Niles Township Building at 5255 Lincoln, with a self-containing canned goods just in case someone was in need. It then grew to the back room of the Township's building with one full-time employee. And whereas, in 2009, the Niles Township established the food pantry in their annex building at 8341 Lockwood, the former site of a daycare facility, which two of my colleagues do my right remember well. Whereas, the food pantry now serves around 1,000 families a month, which equates to roughly 1,800 family visits a month, as many families rely on the pantry on multiple occasions. In 2018, the pantry distributed just under 1.3 million pounds of food. And whereas, the demand for emergency food assistance still exists, and the demand to keep food banks, like the Township Food Pantry, supplied is as critical as ever. And whereas, the pantry has four full-time employees and close to 30 volunteers to help in the food pantry each month, totaling close to 500 volunteer hours each month. And whereas, the food pantry is run and supported by the Niles Township Government, and whereas, food and other services provided to the pantry clients is paid for out of the pantry foundation, a 501(c)(3) charitable corporation. And whereas, the food pantry is also a place where individuals can perform community service, either through court-ordered community service or through graduation requirements of the local high schools. And some of the volunteers are individuals with special needs. Now therefore, I, George Van Dusen, Mayor of the Village of Skokie, to hereby proclaim the month of December 2019 as Food Pantry Month in the Village of Skokie, and urge all of our residents to support the efforts of the Niles Township Food Pantry by donating, whenever possible, non-perishable food items, or by volunteering time at the pantry. Our commitment to give back and to help those in need is one of the many ways that makes the Village of Skokie one of the best and most livable communities in the United States of America. And I would like to bring to everybody's attention a program that is coming up this Saturday called Pack the Bus. It's this Saturday, December the 7th, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It will be at Target at 6150 West Tewin Avenue in Niles. You can purchase toys and games at the store for children up to the age of 17, and drop them off at the Pack the Bus in the parking lot at the Target. So, if you're so inclined, please participate, or you may make a monetary donation to the Niles Township Food Pantry Drive as well. Please make checks made out to the Niles Township Food Pantry Foundation, 5255 Lincoln Avenue, Skokie 60077. And I would like to present this to our supervisor, if I may, and also a former colleague of ours. He's now gone over to the dark side. Yeah, all right, that's what I meant.
Well, I was going to talk about the Pack the Bus, but thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for doing that for us. And as you said, two of the people in this room were very instrumental in moving the food pantry over to the, what had been a daycare center. And also, the 501(c)(3) foundation was Michael Lorge's idea, which is wonderful, because we can now give people tax benefits, whatever little tax benefits are left, for their donations. So, I want to thank you, and on a personal note, I want to thank the Village of Skokie for everything they have done for me personally, and for everything they've done for the township. Thank you.
Thank you. And we would like to thank the supervisor for her many years of service to the Village of Skokie and to the township. And even though we are a community that has many very successful people, we do have people who are in need and want, and anything anybody could do to help the food pantry would be gratefully appreciated. So, thank you very much for everything you do. The next item on our agenda is report of our village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, Mayor Van Dusen, and good evening, everyone. Item A is regarding the 2019 tax levy ordinance. The 2019 property tax levy ordinance is for a first reading by the village board, and will be back on Monday, December 16th, at our next meeting, for the second reading and adoption. Just in summary, I'd like to highlight that the Village of Skokie's 2019 tax levy request is for 15.4 million and represents the 29th consecutive year that the village board has adopted a levy that is equal to the village's 1990 tax levy. The village's finance director, Julian Prindi, is going to provide a presentation this evening.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Board. It's my pleasure, once again, to present the tax levy for the 2019 tax year. As John mentioned, the 1990 property tax levy for the village was exactly 15,456,695. In the following year, in 1991, the village adopted a five-year freeze. It was later reevaluated at the end of that five-year period, and it was determined the village had the means to continue the freeze. 29 years later, we are here in 2019, requesting the board to adopt the same amount as 1990, exactly at 15,456,695. Just a brief summary on how property taxes are determined and how they end up on property tax bills for the benefits of our audience. Assessing and collecting property taxes is fairly complicated and convoluted process that includes local boards like yourselves, the Cook County Assessor, the Cook County Clerk, the Illinois Department of Revenue, and the Cook County Treasurer. Levis are established by budgetary process and policies. The village specifically assumes an amount to be collected from property taxes as we review and determine our budget for the year. That amount is driven largely by the property tax policy that the village has in place. Once we determine that amount through an appropriations ordinance, we present to you tonight an ordinance that will be later communicated to the county once adopted at the next board meeting. The Cook County Assessor takes all the levis that are submitted to them by various local taxing bodies. As you are aware, Park District, Library, and various school districts levy separate property taxes. They then, using a number provided by the Department of Revenue, calculate a equalized assessed valuation, which becomes the base for taxable property and on what property tax rates are applied for property taxes to be collected. Through that process, the Cook County Treasurer's office then uses these new rates that are calculated and sends out what becomes the second installment of property tax bills. Due to the timing of the ordinance's submittals and all the calculations, the first installment of property tax bills is typically estimated from the prior year with a small percentage adjustment in anticipation of the new levy that comes out, sometimes in June or July. Once property owners get their property tax bills, they pay begrudgingly, and then the Cook County Treasurer forwards those funds to the various local taxing bodies on a set schedule. Probably too much folks wanting to know about property taxes on that. As mentioned, the village is levying the same amount as originally levied in 1990. As you're well aware, the buying power of the dollar decreases every year, which is what's known as inflation, and $10, essentially, what you could buy with $10 in 1990 probably requires close to $17 or $18 today. Had the village adjusted the levy annually just by the inflation factor, the 2019 tax levy would have been 26,623,738, which would be 11,167,043 higher than the levy presented to you today. This amount would ultimately mean that each household, on average, would pay an additional $262 more in property taxes, just for the village's share only. This graph essentially represents the same information as the previous chart. The red line here is the inflation-adjusted levy, and the green bar, the green line, is the fixed levy that the village has levied since 1990. And you can see the gap there at the end of that graph in 2019. Here's another depiction of property taxes and how they're distributed among the various property owners. As I mentioned, various taxing bodies levy property taxes on Cook County and specifically Skokie properties. This $100 bill represents the total amount paid by each property. You can see in 1990, the village's share of that property tax bill was about 16%, and that, just due to the fact that the village has maintained a frozen levy, has dropped to about 6.4% in the 2019 levy year. By and large, the biggest part of the property tax bill is dedicated to school districts. And that's not, that's not without design. Essentially, municipalities and counties who levy property taxes have various means of raising revenue, whereas, as we mentioned in the past, school districts are very limited to the amount allocated to them from the state, as well as property taxes. And that is the reason why the largest share of the property taxes goes to the schools. It has gone from about 55.9% in 1990, and that's the combined average grade school and average high school, to approximately 71.2% in 2019. Just a brief summary of how the Village of Skokie uses the property taxes we levy annually. In the fiscal 2020 budget, there's approximately 9 million, just over 9 million, dedicated to public services, which includes anything from police, fire, public works, administration. There's about 5.5 million in taxes levied specifically for pensions, and there's a small amount, 892,000, dedicated to the repayment of debt. If you were to compare these numbers from the prior year, you would notice that the portion dedicated to pensions has increased significantly. We made the decision, as we prepared the budget, to divert a higher amount of property taxes to the pensions to guarantee that funding, understanding that public pensions have become a financial strain, and decisions have to be made today to continue to fund those appropriately. Just by comparison, last year, the pension amount was about 3.3 million. The pension amount this year is broken down, 2.4 million to the fire pension, about 2.2 for AMRF, and just under a million for the police pension fund. The amount dedicated specifically for the levying of debt has decreased significantly from the prior year, and that's in part due to the village being creative and taking advantage of various market conditions to go out and refinance about 15 million or so in an issue we originally put out in 2009. It's called the Build America Bonds Rebate. It was immediately following the recession. It was an issuance that was used specifically for the building of the new police facility. At the time, the interest rates were not low, but the federal government rebated a portion of that interest to the issuers, which made it, at the time, feasible for the village to issue. The market being what it is, rates have dropped significantly. The village was able to take advantage of that factor, as well as receiving favorable credit ratings for both Moody's and Fitch, which are bond rating agencies. In all, we were able to save about $1.5 million in interest costs just by refinancing and not extending the term of the bonds, originally scheduled to expire in 2029. Those bonds will again expire in 2029, but for about $1.5 million less in cost to the village. In addition to refinancing debt, staff continues to put forth efforts to reduce costs, and as we approach each year and each budget, we look at both the revenue side and significantly the expense side. Some efforts that continue to contribute to the frozen levy is, for example, this year, we adopted a two-year budget to begin in fiscal '20 and extend to fiscal 2021, and this was done to strategically address both revenue challenges and expense challenges in the future. We have continued to maintain services while seeking to reduce costs wherever possible. Some examples include our freezing positions. Since the 2008 recession, we have frozen about 27 positions. 12 of those are new to the fiscal 2020 budget. We have consolidated functions wherever possible. As an example, in the Police Department, we consolidated animal control with the community service officers. We have renegotiated contracts, again, wherever possible and wherever we could reopen contracts, and this includes tipping fees and composting charges, telephone charges, and so on. And then, as I mentioned, we have retired and refinanced debt. I didn't mention that the debt retirement pertains to the 2014 debt that we incurred for the addition of the Village Hall. We were able to pay that early, to pay that off early, and saving the village about $80, $85,000 in interest costs this year, and that was paid with specific debt fund reserves that had been accumulated throughout the years for this purpose. So, without accounting for the refinancing of the debt, just the budgetary savings alone in the fiscal 2020 budget amount to over $2 million. Just a quick note on the tax levy and outstanding debt. As I mentioned, there's a very small portion of the property tax levy that goes to funding outstanding debt. The village currently has four bond ordinances filed with the county, which mandate that each year, property taxes are collected to pay down that debt. As it's been our practice year after year, we have abated an amount above the amount that we determined to be available from the frozen tax levy. So, as you see in the screen, about 892,000 of the 7.2 million debt service required for fiscal 2020 comes from property taxes. The majority comes from TIF increment, about 2.5 million, and that's specifically for debt issued within the TIF district for TIF improvements. Telecom taxes of about 950,000 or so are used to pay down part of the debt issued for the police facility. Intergovernmental refers to debt specifically issued by the Skokie Public Library. As you're aware, from the ordinance that we issued in October, the village issues debt on behalf of the library, but the library is responsible to pay that debt, and that flows through as an intergovernmental in our financial statements. Special service area debt covers about 172,000. Again, these are special service area... Special Service Area debt covers about $172,000. Again, these are special service area property taxes collected above and beyond the levy and limited to improvements made to those specific special service areas. The federal interest rebates refers to that, the BABS rebate for the 2009 bonds. We were able to receive that rebate for this final year before refinancing, and we intentionally structured that financing deal to close after the village had received that $325,000 from the feds. And then, as I mentioned, bond fund reserves went to retire the 2014 loan that we took for the addition to the village hall. I'll spend just a couple of minutes talking about the Skokie Public Library levy. As you're aware, the village is required by law to levy an amount specifically pertaining to the public library. This is a state law requirement. The Skokie Finance Treasurer for the village is also the treasurer for the public library. The library's levy for this year is about $12.2 million. That's a slight reduction in the operational levy from the prior year. However, the total levy of about $13.5 million has not changed from the prior year. The increase, the shift in between operational and total, is due specifically to debt. An additional increase is required in the debt portion of the library levy for this year. As you're well aware, the library has a separately-elected board who determines their funding requirements and the tax levy. Mr. Richard Kong, the library's director, is here to address any questions pertaining to the Skokie Public Library levy. With that, I'll mention that the ordinance will be presented at the next meeting on the 16th for second reading and adoption. This is just an informational presentation tonight. There's no action required of the board. I'll take any questions from the board?
Thank you, Julian. Any questions? Trustee Roberts?
Julian, could you explain our current bond ratings, and what does Fitch and Moody's say about our financial health as a village?
Absolutely. So, we, as I mentioned, we went out, typically, the rating agencies will do annual reviews on outstanding debt, but they won't issue rating opinions until you go out to issue new bonds. We had very good experiences with both Moody's and Fitch this year. Both companies rated the village's debt as investment-grade, you know, the AA1, AA2 category for either of those companies. They do outline the village's strong financial position, strong management of finances, both on the expense side and the revenue side. They do express some concern on the public pension issue, and they do tell us outright that this is an issue that covers the entire metropolitan area. They will never admit to this, but they tell us that there's a certain Cook County penalty that all municipalities in Cook County are subject to anytime we go out for issuing bonds due to the mandates placed upon us by the state and the county, which are very visible in the public pension funding. And again, they are encouraged by the village's take on increasing funding annually and maintaining 100% funding policy to the 2040 deadline as mandated by the state. But, you know, those concerns aside, they both grant the village investment-grade, very favorable ratings by both Moody's and Fitch.
And this will be back before the board for second reading and adoption, December 16th?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I think this might be the appropriate time, Mr. Dorner. Mr. Dorner requested the opportunity to address the village board. He's the attorney for the Self-Storage Association. So, I think this might be a good time.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, my name is David Dorner. I'm an attorney with Reed Smith in Chicago, and I represent the Self-Storage Association. We're here tonight to discuss the self-storage tax that the village enacted recently. Shortly after the tax was passed, the Self-Storage Association did reach out to the Corporation Council and voiced their concerns of the association as its members, which are the owners and operators of self-storage facilities in the village. Since that first reach out to the Corporation Council, we have had a chance to meet with the Corporation Council and the village manager to talk about those concerns in greater detail. And more recently, we had a chance to meet with the mayor as well. Tonight, I thought I would take the opportunity to voice those concerns directly to the trustees as well. Tonight, with me as well is a member of the Self-Storage Association, as well as a few owners and operators that would also like to say a few things to the village trustees. And they could tell you, and will tell you, about how the tax affects their business and their tenants. I'm here to speak to how the tax, from our opinion, is unlawful, that it's ripe for challenge, and that we think it should be withdrawn. As many of you may be aware, home municipalities like the village of Skokie are given great latitude in raising taxes. However, one area in which there are restrictions and which require general assembly authorization is taxes on occupations and taxes on income. The village tax on the privilege of renting and leasing, which are occupation activities, makes this an unlawful occupation tax. Importantly, the village tax is not on occupying a self-storage facility or some other non-occupation activity. The tax is also on the rental charges, which is the income of self-storage owners and operators, which would also make an unlawful income tax. One hallmark of an unlawful occupation tax is whether the seller, or in this case, the owner and operators, if they have to share or shoulder the burden of that tax. In the way the tax is written, it is the self-storage owners and operators, they have to file their returns and remit the tax. The tenants do not have their own requirement to pay the tax if not collected by the self-storage operators or to self-report or self-remit that tax. The owners and operators are also responsible for the tax, even if the tenants don't pay it. If the tenants happen to be exempt from taxation, such as a government entity, the owners are still responsible for paying that tax. Enforcement of the tax and the penalties that are imposed by the tax are imposed solely on the owners and operators. All these things together would make this an unlawful occupation tax. The tax also violates, in our opinion, the uniformity clause of the Illinois Constitution. If the uniformity clause challenge is raised, which is an argument we would make, it has to satisfy two things. It has to be based on a real and substantial difference between those who are taxed and not taxed, and the tax has to have some reasonable relationship to the purpose of the tax. And we believe both those things are violated with the self-storage tax. The tax is imposed only on self-storage operators. It excludes many of its competitors, warehouses, commercial properties. It excludes storage pods. It excludes apartments that happen to have rental storage lockers or other facilities for their tenants. These are direct competitors of self-storage facility, and there's no real and substantial difference between those landlords and self-storage operators. Tax also excludes outdoor storage from taxation, limiting the taxation to only self-storage enclosed facilities. A person can rent an entire warehouse, half a warehouse, a quarter of a warehouse in the village and not be subject to the tax, but if they rent a 10-by-12 space within a self-storage facility, they're subject to taxation. And we believe this clearly discriminates against self-storage operators. We'd also argue that self-storage tax, if we had to argue this, bears no reasonable relationship to the objective of the tax, which is to raise money. By not including the warehouses and the apartment buildings that have self-storage, you are eliminating additional taxpayers from taxation. Another justification for the tax is that self-storage facilities have increased traffic in the village. However, storage units are visited and frequently compared to such things as warehouses and apartment buildings. Plus, the village has already argued to maintain the transportation network companies, such as Uber, are responsible for increased traffic in the village, and we'd argue that that is not related to self-storage operators. Thus, we believe the tax also bears no reasonable relationship to the objective of the tax. Based on these are other arguments, such as the tax possibly being an unlawful property tax, since it's not based on fair value, some due process concerns under the US and Illinois constitutions for being vague, we believe this tax should be withdrawn, and we ask that the village consider that request. Thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorner. Did anybody else wish to address this?
Yeah.
I mean, if...
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Mike Surick. I'm one of the owners that Dave has mentioned in the village. 3,500 Oakton is the property that my partners and I purchased about two years ago. We refer to it as the, it looked more like the, it had all the parapits and it looked like the White Castle headquarters at one time. We purchased that building and came into Skokie, and quite frankly, the relationship with the building department, planning and zoning have been tremendous. It's been a pleasure, actually, working with the village. We've taken that asset, and we're really proud of what we transformed it into. And we actually have a unique situation there where we have half of the property, it's about 180,000 feet, half of the property is self-storage. The other half, we were asked, the village asked us to maintain an industrial base of warehouse and light manufacturing. We had a state of Illinois in there at one time. It was completely vacated. So, we were tasked with re-tenanting that side of the building, and today, I'm proud to say that we have most of that leased with new tenants and, you know, bringing those jobs to the city and actually turning that building around. But this tax kind of caught us off-guard and by surprise. It's related and directed only to the self-storage. You know, we are aware of other municipalities that have tried to impose this. I think the biggest surprise to us that it was just, it was done in, not necessarily secrecy, but we didn't receive notice. We didn't have an opportunity to come talk to you. And for somebody who comes and invests its time and energy and money in the village, it's a tax that, you know, we feel is somewhat unfair, and I start to wonder whether or not, is it going to happen to the other side of my property? Are my industrial tenants going to be taxed? And our partners also have many apartment buildings in the city. Are we going to start to tax apartment buildings? And I just would like the opportunity to have that as an open forum to discuss that tax and how it actually came about, and why is it specific to self-storage? That's all. But I, overall, the city has been terrific. It's been a great working experience, and our, you know, our facility is doing well. And I learned a lot today from Julian, by the way, on the taxing body, because we challenge our real estate taxes all the time, too. Our taxes have increased. Our taxes are roughly $600,000 now on that piece of property, and it is excessive. And it's just being taxed to death is very difficult to continue. So, thank you for your time and the few minutes that you've given me. Thank you.
Thank you. We will certainly, we're certainly amenable to continuing the dialogue on the subject of property taxes. That is one of the biggest problems in the state of Illinois, and hopefully, the state legislature is going to be able to figure something out. I know it's on their radar. John, Michael, and I have met with the legislators, and we've discussed that situation with them, so it's helpful for us to learn, aside from your opposition to the tax, what your property tax indebtedness is. So, thank you very much for your words this evening. We appreciate it, and as I say, we will continue the dialogue, and we're certainly amenable to it. Next item on the agenda.
Item C, item B of my report was approved as part of the consent agenda this evening, and then, item C is regarding a request for executive session pursuant to Section 2, Paragraph C 11 of the State of Illinois's Open Meeting Act. A closed session is requested and to adjourn therefrom.
A motion is in order. Trustee Bromberg, seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Hellrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Wendus?
Aye. The motion passes.
That completes my report this evening.
Thank you. Next item is report of our Corporation Counsel, Michael Lord.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees, good evening, everyone. Item A on my agenda was an ordinance adopted as part of the consent agenda at the beginning of tonight's meeting, and with that, it would conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you. The final item on the agenda is citizen comments. Is there anybody who wishes to address the village board? Yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We could have your name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor and Village Board, my name is Joseph Doherty. I'm with the Illinois Self-Storage Association. Our address is 1901 North Beauregard Street, Alexandria, Virginia, 22311. I'm here this evening also to address the tax that the two previous speakers addressed. Our organization represents the owners and operators of the seven self-storage facilities here in Skokie. All are opposed to the self-storage tax. As the previous speaker noted, the tax was approved as part of a consent agenda with, as far as we can tell, no apparent public discussion and no outreach to our members.
No, no. It was done, we do two readings, so I don't, you're looking at the second agenda. The first, when it was initially brought up, it was brought up in public, subject to public comment. The second time, second reading, traditionally, we put second readings on the consent agenda, and if anybody wishes, as we did this evening, we ask, is there anybody who would like to have it removed? We do so when somebody does, and then they're permitted to present their disagreement or agreement, as the case may be. So, let's, just wanted to make sure that that's...
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Mayor. However, there wasn't any outreach to our affected businesses or our customers prior to this. I don't question that it was appropriately put on the notice and that there was at least an opportunity theoretically to comment. I want to note two items in particular related to this tax. First is that two of the most recent communities to consider the tax, consider a similar tax, rejected it. Those communities are your neighbors, Willmet and Evanston. In both cases, they, we had found out about the tax beforehand, and we had an opportunity to present prior to budget approval during the budget deliberation process. Therefore, in those cases, the councils learned that the tax would have an unfair burden on low and middle-income residents, many facing difficult life circumstances. We do a, we commissioned a study every three years called the Self-Storage Demand Study. That study shows that approximately 50%, of self-storage tenants have annual incomes below $55,000 a year. That's household incomes, not individual incomes, and many are facing challenging life circumstances. I think we're going to have another speaker address that. But typically, those are issues such as divorce, dislocation, disaster, other traumatic life events that are, typically, drive people to needing self-storage. It's not simply a matter, it's not primarily a matter of people just having, quote-unquote, "too many toys." The second item I want to address is relating to the property taxes. In tax year 2018, the self-storage businesses in Skokie paid over $150,000 in taxes to the village and another approximately $200,000 in taxes to support the libraries and parks. We pay these taxes as we're members of the community, and I think many of our members are happy to support the communities that they're in, although our businesses have only a light use of an impact on public services. For example, self-storage has less of an impact on roads than other uses, such as retail multifamily or even professional use, professional office uses, which also don't generate sales taxes. Again, according to the 2017 Self-Storage Demand Study, approximately 60% of self-storage customers visit their, the self-storage business once per month or less frequently. Therefore, a targeted tax on self-storage, especially one borne by low and middle-income residents, is not only unfair, it's unjustified, given the amount of property taxes that are already paid by these businesses. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you this evening, and we respectfully request that the village withdraw this tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you.
Did anybody else wish to address the board?
No, he basically said exactly what I was...
No, he basically said exactly.
Right, that's, I...
I'm with Public Storage.
I thought it was, I know.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, you know...
I thought it was kind of comprehensive.
Yeah, it was, but most of our customers, the question I was making is, most of our customers are in some sort of distress.
Wait, 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 I, just for the rec, because this is being, uh, conveyed by television. If you would like, and give us your name and address.
You took my spiel, but I'm with Public Storage, we're the biggest operator in the country, uh, been in Skokie since nineteen-eighty-six. I can tell from personal experience, most of our customers are in distress, um, so this tax will be affecting people who are already facing difficult circumstances in life. Um, it's not a luxury item, it's a need of, it's a necessity for most of our customers, and, um, that's why I'd like to see the tax repealed.
I need your name.
Oh, Seth Smith with Public Storage, sorry.
Okay.
I'm the, uh, senior VP here in Chicago.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, I think of trustee Roberts this evening.
I would make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Thank you.